It's now time to resume the meeting, the second public hearing of the PAC. We will start the combined discussion of parts four and five. I'll now invite the deputy chairman to speak. Thank you, Chair. Well, I'll first give a summary and then members will ask questions. I believe this is a part where we have the, we have much concern. Let's look at annex seven of gen four. Let me refer members and representatives to the relevant corporate governance manual. The latest version is the version in May twenty twenty two. Is that the case, Mr Ivan Lee? Or is it Mr Feng who is going to answer this question? Correct. Mr Feng, as a CEO, has a responsibility or in paragraphs three point seven, it sets out the CEO's duties. From three point seven point one A to G. We do not have a Chinese version, so I'll perhaps read out the English version. We have to properly allocate and use resources. Is that correct? As a CEO, that's what he or she should do. Deputy Chairman, you're referring to gen four annex seven. Yes, annex seven, paragraph three point seven point one A to G. Mr Feng. Yes. Chair, excuse me. I did not get the question. Can you confirm whether my understanding is correct? The CEO's responsibility is to make sure resources are allocated properly. Especially in point G, it says that there should be proper utilization of resources and there should be good management practices.
Mr Andy Feng, thank you, Chairman. Deputy Chair is correct. Please allow me to speak on other paragraphs as well. On page eleven, from page nine rather, three, paragraph three point four, technology committee. It sets out the operation of the technology committee. There were paragraphs about the choice of projects, the selection of projects, as well as the assessment. Yes, Deputy Chair is correct. This committee holds quarter quarterly meetings. So in the monitoring of the projects, subcommittees are responsible for monitoring the project. Is that correct? Yes, that is correct. In paragraph three point six, that is the subcommittee of the technology committee. One of the responsibilities is to examine and endorse the reports. Then it will be given to the technology committee, but overall, it is this committee of the technology committee that is responsible for this. Is that correct? Yes. In paragraph three point six point three, Ms Carmen Khan mentioned this point as well. This subcommittee should convene meetings normally on a weekly basis. Is that correct, Mr Andy Feng? Yes, correct. Deputy Chair? In audit report four point two two, there seems to be a discrepancy between what was done and what should be done. According to the director of audit's report, the subcommittee should convene meetings normally on a weekly basis. But according to record from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty three, the subcommittee had not held any meetings at all. Subcommittee members only discussed and endorsed the agenda items through circulation via emails. Is that correct? That is, you're referring to paragraph four point two two in the report. Is that correct? Yes. Ms Jenny Yu?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Deputy Chair, for the question. The subcommittee of the technology committee handles all the matters we entrusted this subcommittee to handle, including any delay in the project, any change in the project. We sent emails and we also had face-to-face discussions, but we did not hold meetings on a weekly basis. There wasn't a record of the matters discussed. But for all the responsibilities that we asked this subcommittee to do, say, to examine and endorse the reports upon completion of the projects, the subcommittee did finish these tasks. Then the reports were submitted to the I T C for approval. In case of any problems, the I T C requests that the matters be discussed in the subcommittee.
Deputy Chairman? Yes, in theory, it should work like this. But I understand we hold video conferencing meetings and it might be more effective, especially during the pandemic. If need be, should you amend the manual? So that you won't be acting not in accordance with the manual. You said that you did all the things through email. This may not give the public a good perception, especially when we talk a lot about commercialization, results, and so on. All committees are important, but this subcommittee of the technology committee is all about selecting projects and assessing the effectiveness of the projects. All these are very important. So should you update the guideline, the menu rather? Mr Andy Feng?
Yes, I agree. In the audit report, by the end of this financial year, six measures will be implemented. On the overall supervision of the projects, the technology committee needs to be clear as to how the supervision should take place.
So after all these years, do you think you need to amend the manual to enhance the operation of NAMI? Will you update the manual? No, so far, no. I mean, will you consider amending the manual? Yes, we will consider. So are there not any substantial discrepancies? No. Regarding all the recommendations made by the Audit Commission, we will very seriously review the recommendations. We will review our operation. And all the officers in NAMI need to be responsible for the areas, for their respective areas. Well, I would let other members speak. Ms Carmen Khan?
Thank you, Chairman. First question I'd like to ask the Audit Commission while preparing for this report. Did you make reference to gen four? That is the documents we require following the first meeting. That is all the funding agreement. That is the original funding agreement and the amended funding agreement. Did you make reference to it? Professor Lam?
Yes, we did. My next question relates to paragraph four point six B footnote eight. It mentions, it doesn't specify the um who is to approve the allowance of the CEO. The approving authorities were defined by the amount of claims involved rather than by the rank of the claimant. I want to know the reason for this mechanism. Mr Andy Feng?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Ms Carmen Khan. Yes, we focused on the amount of the claims instead of the rank. Based on the recommendation of the report, we already updated the guidelines in November. That is, the CEO will have to seek approval from the chairperson of the board of directors. We have already made an improvement in this area. Thirty-three percent, that is for ten business travels. There were excess traveling costs. The approving authorities were different. And that is because according to the corporate governance manual, the approving authorities were defined by the amount of claims involved rather than by the rank of the claimant. So the focus is on the amount of claims. So can you tell us who is to approve the excess traveling costs? I can give you an example. In three out of the nine business travels, in three of these nine um business travels, the costs were in relation to the change in the airfares. And we have already updated the manual. In the future, for any excess traveling costs involving the CEO, the CEO will have to seek approval from the board of directors. Ms Carmen Khan?
Well, I think he misunderstood my question. Excess by one hundred dollars, who is to approve by excess of um one thousand dollars, who is to approve? I'm asking about this. You are aware of the problem and when you made improvements, the CEO will have to seek approval from the chairwoman for approval. Are there any considerations in the manual for the chairwoman to approve? It is not the case that the chairwoman can approve the excess business traveling costs just because she's the chairwoman. You need to have some rationale.
The approving authorities were defined by the amount of claims involved rather than the rank of the claimant. We made reference to the manual. We have already changed the requirements in November. When I need to go on business travel, I need to seek approval from my higher up. So I will have to seek approval from the chairwoman and for my subordinates, they will have to seek approval from me, the CEO. So we no longer use the amount of claims involved as the criterion. Well, you used to grant the approval by the amount of claims. When the CEO goes on a business travel, what considerations does the chairwoman have to approve the application? It is not the case that the chairwoman can approve the application just because she's the chairwoman. In the past, when you approved the application by the amount of claims involved, what were your guidelines? For the highest rank, like Mr Andy Feng, you have to seek approval from the chairperson of the board of directors, but what guidelines does the chairman have to approve the application? If one wants to stay behind on the business travel, what standards or what criteria do you have to approve these applications? For the first question, in annex seven three point nine, we have set out the approval authority. Over two million dollars, one will have to seek approval from the board of directors. Expenditure between um half a million to two million dollars, one will have to seek the approval from CEO and one of the senior officers, that is C T O or C O O. We also thank the Audit Commission for telling us that we did not set out the items in relation to CEO. We are actively following up on it. In the upcoming board of director meetings, one of the agenda items is to engage a professional to help us update and review the corporate governance manual. In the meantime, CEO is the same as all officers. When the CEO goes on business travel, the CEO will have to comply with all the pre-approved, the pre-approved um cir- circumstances of the business travel. And the officer will have to pay the difference if the airfare is more expensive than the approved amount. And when there are important meetings of NAMI, the CEO cannot apply for leave on his travel. Ms Carmen Khan? In the corporate governance manual, are you referring to three point nine? Appendix seven, I don't see three point nine. Which are you referring to two oh um year twenty twenty two? Page thirty three. Gen four, page thirty three. Well, I ask this question because I want to make this discovery applicable to other R and D centers as well. We have NAMI's corporate's corporate governance manual. I want it to be applic- applicable to other R and D centers as well. The chairperson is not a member of the board of directors. So when the CEO needs to go on business travel, how should the expenditure be dealt with? And that might not be applicable to an officer being employed because in the um, a director is not paid. So the CEO is not the same as other senior officers in NAMI. For the criteria mentioned by the chairwoman, it wasn't set out in the corporate governance manual. Say whether there are important meetings of NAMI. Otherwise, not many people would want to become the chairperson of the institution. The chairperson of the board of directors has a significant responsibility, so we need to give the chairperson some criteria in order for him or her to approve the application. The criteria are not detailed enough right now.
Mr Andy Feng? Thank you, Chairman. I agree. Ms Carmen Khan? Next, on the management of declaration uh of uh interest conflict of interest. Can the audit first um explain? Under the current arrangement, disclosure of directors in terms of conflict of interest, uh what are the inadequacies at the moment? Director of Audit?
Thank you. Uh first, please refer to the reference part, uh part four point two four. Starting from there, we explain what we found. Now, um there is a two-tier reporting system, as is the usual convention. And then in para four point two nine, tier two, the reference board of uh uh board members are required to declare interest on items under discussion if there is any conflict of interest. But then from meeting records, we don't see such declaration. Put simply, that's the case.
Ms Carmen Khan, can you explain what is the tier one and tier two reporting? So the both the media and the public will know currently how we manage the uh uh possible conflict of interest um of board of um members on I projects they have to approve. So it's uh para four point two seven. Yeah, our first tier means uh uh there's any declaration. Second tier means before a meeting, like um uh at the start of the public hearing this time, members will ask if members uh cha- the chairman asks if members need to declare interest. So that's second tier. And then for the second tier declaration, that should be uh recorded in the minutes. But then from the minutes, we do not see whether such declarations were made. Ms Carmen Khan? Thank you, Director of Audit. So uh uh forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven of the member uh clauses, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven of the memorandum, that's to deal with conflict of interest of board members. So so for forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven compared to first and second tier reporting. Now for first and second tier reporting, uh is that the requirement in NAMI's um corporate governance menu? So so this que- direct question is for the the audit. Okay, Director of Audit, please. Professor Lam?
Well, we have um checked that I uh compare the two, they are more or less the same. More or less the same. Um forty-five and forty-six of the memorandum, um what's your understanding of that? Now for forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, it's similar to second tier reporting in para food two point two uh four point two four of the audit report. That is, if there are direct personal or pecuniary interests, there is need to declare such interest to the chairman as early as possible in relation to the item under discussion. Ms Carmen Khan?
Well, that's not how I read uh forty-five and forty-six of the memorandum. It says that uh all the articles of association, that is, um when you are become a director, you will declare the way uh uh you work, uh which company you work for. And so in future, whenever the contracts um related to company, there will be conflict of interest. That's forty-five. And the forty-six six says that if there's conflict interest, then the member should refrain from voting. But then there are um circumstances, the restriction doesn't apply. If say for that particular contract or item under discussion and the interest involved for the board member is that the board member is just an officer in the re- relevant company. Or uh the 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 person is um just um um uh uh the just holds an office in the party to the contract, then that is not regarded as a conflict of interest. So um the order refers to first and second tier declaration. Is that there is such a s- a mechanism in NAMI's own corporate governance menu? It seems to be more stringent, so I don't think it's more or less the same. Is it that NAMI is following a higher standard?
Ms Wen, Assistant Director of Audit? The audit reporter mentioned requirements on uh declaration of interest. That's uh based on the decoration guidelines provided by NAMI. Where is that guideline? NAMI made reference to uh I C C's um advice and then they the I NAMI provided the guideline to you? Yes. And NAMI then, can you explain what kind of guideline you provided to the audit? Ms Yu, please?
Now, re- receive some reference material from I C C on the guidelines. So you provided the I C C's uh reference is not really your own guideline, right? Ms Khan?
Chairman, thank you for your clarification. You asked a really valid question. So NAMI, um how do you uh on what basis do you hand uh you know, what reference do you make in handling conflict of interest of um board members? Um you you can't just say, well, okay, uh audit suggested this, we think is a good thing, so we do it. No, it's more than that. The key is on the what is the management regime for uh conflict interests among board members at the time. And so uh you should have followed that regime. And if there's no problem, there's no problem. For example, four point uh para four point two seven B. It says here, the board discussed a contract related to the University of Science and Technology. So uh a service fee will be paid to U S T to provide administrative support. And then um uh at the very beginning, uh with the articles of association, well, U S T is the host or institution. So from the very beginning, U S T is the host or institution, so from the very beginning, um U S T is supposed to provide some administrative and other support because U S T is the host or institution of NAMI. So why is there a need to make declaration? Do you follow what I'm saying? So from the very beginning, U S T plays a clear role, uh it's supposed to give administrative support. And according to the articles of association, as long the as the interest was declared at it is upon appointment, everybody knows that a professor came from U S T. So why is there a need to point this out in the other report as an issue? Director of Audit, thank you, let me explain further. Miss Ken referred to the articles of association. Well, that's actually a model articles of association um as required by the uh company's ordinance, that is uh in relation to the proceedings of meetings. On declaration of interest, in all public organizations and and the government, actually, we adopt a two-tier reporting um system like the Leshco's system. And then in our this uh communication with NAMI, four point para four point two four, when NAMI discussed the matter with us, they uh um admitted they also adopted uh first and second tier reporting system. And we included therefore this in the report and NAMI uh NAMI did not raise objection to that. So NAMI has no objection. So the well, the board has been in operation for some years. Uh and the period covered by the other report is from nineteen nine uh twenty nineteen to twenty twenty four. So it's uh so do do they actually follow the first and two-tier decoration system? Because it seems that there are problems with the management of declaration of interest um uh with the board. And um um it seems that it's not properly done, I say second tier declaration. Every time Professor Term who represents the U S T, every meeting he has to tell you that he comes from U S T. Now, in para four point two nine and four point two eight, you uh uh you said that NAMI did not mention again that person uh is from U S T. And so it means that the person may have to leave the meeting or refrain from voting. And then audit said that NAMI did not um keep record of such declarations. So do you accept that to be the case, Mr. Andy Feng? We first, we agree, we adopt a first and second tier decoration system. We have no objection to that. And then uh we did remind board members to declare interest uh for and in some cases, uh the board members did not make a declaration, it's pointed out in the report. And so that's why we have adopted this measure to remind board members again of their functions and of their capacity. So this is to make sure that the members uh bear in mind their capacity and make declarations. So there won't be any omissions again. Miss Carmen Ken, so if someone declares interest, does that person have to stay away from meeting or refrain from voting? Because the order said that you did not have a uniform approach and you uh didn't keep record either, so what will you do in future?
Miss Andy Feng. We agree that the first of all, board uh members must make a declaration and then the chairperson will decide whether that member should um stay away from the discussion.
So you mean you leave it to the uh chairman of the board to decide whether the member will um refrain from the uh uh join in the discussion? Well, because it's based on the nature of the item of the discussion. Miss Carmen Ken, well, uh so you 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 say you're gonna engage a consultant, but in future, NAMI and S T will be merged? So with the uh declaration of interest regime, how can you allow uh board members to take part in the discussion while ensuring there's proper declaration? Shall I shall I go to my second round of question? Well, you have already spent twenty three minutes, let's wait for uh second round. Miss Louis Long. Uh Mister Louis Long, sorry. Thank you, Chairman. Part four. I have a number of questions. Para four point four. The audit examined business twenty business travels outside Hong Kong conducted in the period from twenty nineteen to twenty to twenty twenty three to twenty four. Paragraph four point seven mentions that in the same period, audit, examined, subsistence allowance claims for thirty business travels conducted in the same period. So a question for the audit. In those five years, how many business travels were arranged by NAMI? And did the audit just randomly select some business travels for examination? Or is it case that twenty or thirty business travels were all the business travels conducted in those years? Mr. Andy Feng.
Uh I think the question is for the audit. Uh yes, Professor Lam. We look at we looked at the amount and then we traced how many business travels there were for um you know, totaling that amount, so uh we didn't look at all the business travels. And then we just um pick uh select the business travels out of all those travels. Mister Louis Long.
Okay, then I get it. Uh so for the twenty and business thirty business travels mentioned, was there any duplication?
Professor Lam, yes, correct, some of those travels were the same travels. Now, uh from what I heard from Miss Long, uh well, I do have the information at hand. If I am wrong, I I'll leave it to NAMI to explain. Now, um for the reference business travels, um the reference staff members either uh extended the stay or there was some over expenditure for hotel accommodation or claims amount. So and and um um these travels did overlap in some cases. And so Mister Long, now para four point seven of the audit report. The actual expenditure exceeding the uh allowance, now most of cases involve the chief executive officer at the time. And then para four point five four, um there's a repeated um change of the stay or extension of stay and say it it referred to the same staff member, there's no mention of the post of that staff member concerned. So para four point four refer to this staff member. Is it actually the chief executive officer at the time? Professor Lam. NAMI could provide um specific information. From the information I have at hand, perhaps allow me to explain, taking this opportunity. Now audit uh looks at efficiency, cost saving, and we look at systems and regimes. Now, unless there's any breach of conduct um or breach of the reference rules or regulations, we usually will not mention the post. Uh why do we have to mention the post in para four point seven? Because for that particular post, there's no one higher above uh or for um the uh the the person approved something because of his um um powers and duties. And that's why uh um para four point seven, we have to mention CEO. But then for para four point five, we just mentioned uh staff member. And so we leave it to NAMI to disclose who that staff member was. Mister Andy Andy Feng. Yes, it's correct, um the nine cases involve the um CEO imposed at the at that moment. So now we know why the order presents the report in this manner. Now, four point seven and four point one two. The current guidelines of NAMI uh do not specify the approving officer for reimbursement of uh allowance or claims. And that's why the CEO approved his own uh claims. Last week, Mister Andy Feng, CEO, said that the guidelines were revised and and now the claims for uh expenditure and uh variation to the business travel arrangement. If it involves the CEO, then the chair of the board of directors will have to approve that. So apart from such um amendments to the guidelines, have you also revised other aspects of the guidelines? Mister Andy Feng, thank you. Well, there was a special mention of the CEO. The measure was uh announced in um um on the third of November, and that applies to all staff members. Can we ask NAMI to provide a new set of guidelines to this committee for our record? Yes, surely. I finish my questions on part four. So are we to cover both parts four and five together? Well, in that case, I still have time, so I'll ask questions on part four as well, uh part five as well. Part five. Para five point nine, table twenty two. Analyze audit analyzed the staff turnover of NAMI for the period from twenty nineteen to twenty to twenty twenty three to twenty four. Order found that on average, fifty seven staff members left NAMI. The average staff turnover rate was twenty two point eight percent. And then I refer to para one point one two of the report. And among the two hundred and fifty um NAMI staff members, hundred and eighty nine are R and D staff. Uh among the two hundred and fifty two staff members, hundred and eighty nine are R and D staff members. So uh have you um got any um this uh ratio of um uh R and D staff leaving? Uh um close to ninety percent uh of staff members who quit are R and D staff. So the percentage is so high, close to ninety percent. Have you assessed the impact on your R and D work, Mister Feng?
Having referred to statistics, it from twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three, twenty four, our staff turnover rate decreased from twenty three percent to twenty two odd percent to eighteen odd percent. So we have been controlling our staff turnover. We have made pre-assessments so that we will have a low turnover still and that it is controlled, especially for R and D staff. With our statistics, we believe we can retain ninety percent of the staff. Have you assessed why there was such a high turnover before? In the in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, as you may remember, back then, the pandemic was very serious and we have half of the staff who were from the mainland, they can come to Hong Kong and they stayed in mainland in the end. There was also immigration of certain staff members. The two major reasons for staff turnover in the past were these two. Now we do not see as many people leaving as a result as we are now past the pandemic. I'm glad to hear that the situation is under control. Can the CEO tell us what measures were implemented to effectively control the staff turnover rate? We have generally six measures. One, cash awards. We have many teams who have excellent R and D capabilities and they have receive awards, they will get bonuses from those, and we also have summer internships. So we have new talents joining, they are not necessarily for the retention of talents from twenty twenty. We have research bonus for twenty percent of the research income. It will be distributed to the research team. That's the third measure. The fourth measure is that there should be continuous research and study. And we have a subsidy program that would subsidize talents to study doctoral degrees. We also have a moving bonus as well as engineering interns. From twenty twenty one, we have implemented the move bonus to attract more overseas and mainland talents. We will provide one month salary subject to a cap of fifty thousand dollars for them to come to Hong Kong to work. Thank you, Mister Louis Long. I'm very to happy to hear that the institute has implemented these measures to control staff wastage. I'm now coming to my last question on paragraph five point three two, table twenty six. The audit analyzed for the five past five years the operating expenditure and R and D project costs of NAMI. It is found that the operating expenditure increased by forty seven percent from seventy eight point seven million dollars in twenty nineteen to twenty to one hundred and fifteen point nine million dollars in twenty twenty three to twenty four. As for the ratio of operating expenditure to R and D project costs, they have increased from sixty six percent in twenty nineteen to twenty to seventy four percent in twenty twenty three to twenty four. I want to ask NAMI, what measures will be implemented to control the operating expenditure in order to enhance cost effectiveness? Is it like the CEO said, we would have more measures like what you had that would try to retain talents? Is there any conflict between retaining talents and controlling the operating expenditure? Well, Mister Andy Feng, in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, we have purchased labs for construction and healthcare-related research. So we had a significant cost there. We will then had less in capital expenditure for equipment. We also obtained funding from Leshco for the next three years and our expenditure will be the same for the next three years. So it's all about how we can make use of the same amount of funding and enhance our cost effectiveness. Thank you, Mister Louis Long. Well, I'm not an accountant, but I want to ask perhaps the audit commission, for expenditure on equipment, shouldn't it be treated as an asset rather than an expenditure and every year? There should be depreciation calculated. What is the usual approach adopted? Having procured such equipment, should you treat that as an expense at all? Thank you. Professor Nelson Lam. Thank you, Chair, thank you, Mister Louis Long. With the capitalization of some expenditure or whether we should include it in profit and loss statement? Now we call it the statement of comprehensive income. In general, it has to conform to sixteen of article sixteen of the Hong Kong Financial Reporting Standards. So if they conform to So if they conform to the Hong Kong Financial Reporting Standards, they would have already capitalized. The relevant assets. Even for rental of premises, some parts of the rent would have to be capitalized in accordance with the Hong Kong Financial Reporting Standards. It can get quite complex, so I won't go into details here. We also have a legal member who is in the accountancy sector, so perhaps he can explain more. For rent. Expenditure on assets. It is a question whether we should treat all of such expenditure as operating expenditure. Mister Andy Feng, anything to add? We did see it was treated as an operating expenditure. As for whether we need to enhance. The approach in future, we'll definitely discuss that. So in accordance with the Hong Kong Financial Standards, the expenditure should be capitalized. We should adopt this approach because. It will reflect. In reality. The recurrent expenditure of the institute. Thank you. Next, Mister Evan Wong.
Thank you, Chair. I want to go to part four, part four point two. It's about staying behind. The staff member concerned might use their own vacation days to stay behind. I think that's quite common in the business sector. I want to ask with the updated guidelines, can staff members still stay behind with their own leave days? Thank you, Mister Andy Feng. Before, all along, there were business travels and there were staff members applying for leave. The staff member concerned did do this, but they did it separately. That is, they applied for. A business travel and then they applied for leave. But the other staff members did not put two and two together. In future, we have to make sure the two applications are combined. So that for all staff members, their staff supervisors would be aware of both applications. Before the applications were appro- are approved. Mister Evan Wong. I don't think you can stop people from taking leave after business travels. I'm just asking if it is allowed. That once people are done with their business travels, they can stay there without coming back here to work. And why I'm asking this? Because travel fares would be involved. In the private sector, it is not the case that. The come, the trip back would be subsidized. In the public sector, it is seen that that may happen more of often. So I want to ask if there is any new mechanism for one to have to come back to Hong Kong first. So as to prevent. Misappropriation of public money. Professor Cheng. I'm answering this question because the chairperson of the board would approve business travel arrangements of the C E O. We will follow the directions in the corporate governance manual. With what you said earlier, the arrangement is not. Quite the same, okay? Okay, I have received some word of a confirmation. So with. Plane trip tickets being changed if they do not follow the government's arrangements. I guess that is not ideal, but there is probably not much we can do. As for. Travel fares, have you had any changes made to the traveling costs to be? Settled later. Professor Cheng. Now for all staff members, when they apply for leave, if they have annual leave, they first. Have to include such when they apply for the duty trip, so everyone is on the same page, they know about this and. I cited a principle that there should not bear an impact on the resources or an impact on the institute. We haven't engaged any professionals. Before to update the corporate. Governance manual afterwards, we have engaged professionals, updated the corporate governance manual and notified staff members of such. I'll let Mister Andy Feng. Confirm if that is the case, correct? Miss Jenny Yu, something to add? Yes. If a staff member has. Received approval for business travel and then they had to amend their itineraries. They would have to go through their administrative section to. Book their plane tickets. Should there be a discrepancy in the amount, we will. Immediately ask the staff member to settle the difference in future. Mister Edmund Wong. Let me first. Talk about the point made by Professor Cheng. Yes, Professor Cheng. She said there is no impact on the resources, but then the C E O staying behind. Did not use any extra resources of the institute, but then. The staff member himself is a resource and the plane tickets. They have saved some money by. Not having to pay themselves for the trip to that particular place. In fact, in. Under the government's arrangements, often staff members would be asked to come back to Hong Kong before they leave. For their own personal trips before going elsewhere. Professor Sun, something to say? Yes, that is quite a good question, Mister Edmund Wong. The. Arrangements adopted followed those of the host institution for the government's arrangements. Many years ago, the arrangements were amended for government personnel. Should they have any personal trips after business travel? It's not that it's not allowed, it's just that there has to be approval and there has to be duration of. Duty package that it has to be fetted quite stringently, the application. I have joined the government for two odd years now, I'm aware of this. But from what I know, no one really does that. So for example, when I went to Beijing, when I came back. If I had to purchase another ticket to go to Beijing, that. Is what I do, but for universities, they have always allowed people to stay behind. It's not just. Universities in Hong Kong, it's the same in the mainland or the rest of the world. NAMI is. An institution under the H K U S T. So they have always. Followed the procedures of the H K U S D rather than the government's arrangements. After first of April next year. There will be a merger between Astray and NAMI. Perhaps in future. The board may have different requirements. But for the persons in charge, we should probably have. Some more stringent requirements be- and we can perhaps impose. The government's arrangements on them. For however, frontline R and D officers, we should. Provide them with much more flexibility. So I'm just showing you my observations. I will leave the decision for the board in future to make. Such relevant decisions. Professor Cheng, anything to add? None. Mister Evan Wong. I think Professor Cheng. And Professor Sun for speaking on the issue. They may have their own code, but I think there is a reason for implementing relevant arrangements in the public sector. Perhaps as Professor Sun said, there should be a different set of requirements for senior personnel. We need to make sure we won't have senior management that seem to be corrupt. Or at least give off the perception of being corrupt. For four point eight, it says that. There is actual expenditure exceeding the entitled subsistence allowance. The hotel accommodation costs in particular. Were due to. Perhaps the staff members having to stay at designated hotels, but why was there an. Excedence with subsistence allowance. That is for meal costs. It. The excess amounts range from six hundred and seven to four thousand and seven hundred dollars. Why was there? An exceedance of the meal costs? Mister Andy Feng, indeed, for for business travels. The meal costs exceeded entitled subsistence allowance. In twenty twenty one in Geneva, the meal costs exceeded by six hundred dollars. It was because. It was a bit rushed and. There. There was a need to eat at the hotel. After that, there was a Las Vegas trip. That involved four to five staff members and the meal costs exceeded by three thousand dollars. Again, they were in a rush to attend some events, so they had to have breakfast. In the hotel, so that cost thirty thousand eight hundred dollars. In twenty twenty three, there was a San Diego trip. Again, for breakfast and dinner, there were no other options. They had to stay in the hotel and eat, so that was roughly one thousand odd dollars. For another Las Vegas trip. There were no other options. Again, they had to eat at the hotel. The. Meal costs exceeded the entitled allowance by four thousand seven hundred dollars. So there was no other options, basically. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand the explanation. If there were these reasonable explanations, the audit commission can consider including these explanations in the in the report as well. Otherwise, it would be unfair to NAMI. So is it possible for audit commission to include these explanations in the report? Because if the public didn't know, they would think that there were excess costs. Mister Andy Feng?
Yes, I agree. We will explain these more clearly in order to enhance transparency. Thank you.
Mister Edmund Wong?
Thank you. Four point one five. NAMI said that it would enhance the guideline. There are points A to I. Three of these points enhance the guidelines. Three of these points has reminded all staff. As I mentioned on last occasion, enhance, remind, these are the means. We need to regularly make sure. We are acting in accordance with the directions and we need an effective mechanism, effective checklist or guidelines. Apart from having reminded or will enhance, how are you going to ensure? That the staff members concerned will reach the target and this would be made a criterion in a performance appraisal? So how are you going to implement this? Mister Andy Feng? Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mister Edmund Wong. For this guideline. We settle clearly the responsibility. And restrictions. If the behavior is not accepted or is not acceptable, we we will include it in the performance appraisal of the staff member for consideration. So have you already added it to it, to the circle, to the um? Guideline, we have added it to the circular, but we haven't yet made it a criterion in a performance appraisal. Do you have any tally of the number of circulars issued on an annual basis? No, we don't, we do not have a tally, we'll have to go back and check. If you issue a circular every day, how can you make sure all staff members know well the circulars? The purpose of circulars is to let staff members know important information. This should be a regular mechanism and you shouldn't do it by way of circulars. Mister Andy Feng, I agree. Based on these reports. I tell all staff members the gravity of the situation. I hold town halls. I had two meetings with staff members. I told them the purpose of these guidelines, not just the guidelines themselves. So first of all. We need to start from the values of staff members and I already held two town halls to tell these staff members the values. Then managers will. Assess whether staff members have changed their values accordingly after my town halls. Of course. Circulators are effective, they provide textual guidelines. But when it comes to training staff members, we need to let staff members know why we are doing so. Mister Edmund Wong? Mister Andy Feng said that he had already started work on this front, especially on the values front. I commanded. We need to let all staff members know the reason behind what they are doing. And what the consequences would be if they did not comply with the directions. Otherwise, if they do not understand, no matter how many circles you issue. They wouldn't understand. You could have issued a circular every day. But it wouldn't be effective. The key is to turn guidelines. And criteria into a performance appraisal criterion. In table twenty four. For grades A and B. A total of eighty three percent were ranked either A or B. How did you um arrive at these performance grades? Some staff members did not fill out the report appropriately and so on. These were mentioned in the report. So how did you assess the performance of staff members? Mister Andy Feng? Thank you. Table twenty four contains information of the overall distribution. Staff members of different functions and responsibilities. For R and D teams. The time, the end result of. the time, the end result of the R and D projects, did they generate actual income or revenue? Promotion is different. So the criteria used to assess staff members is different. Well, just now you mentioned many R and D projects did not generate income, and reports were not submitted in a timely manner either. Are these performance criteria of staff members? Yes, we mentioned these were deficiencies in our governance, but we will make improvements. There wasn't any direct assessment in the past. After improving the mechanism, we are confident that we will make improvements. Mister Eman Wong. I'm glad to hear some feasible methods mentioned by Mister Andy Feng. Last question. Mister Louis Long asked about five point three two. Laboratories, capital assets are put under operating expenditure. Hence, the figure is larger at seventy-four percent. In the future, when there are similar reports, you may not put fixed assets into PPE. In order to better express the information, you can take it out. Say, out of seventy-four percent, how much is a one-off capital expenditure? That would be better, and that would be fair to NAMI. As a member of the public, when I read the information, I would think that you don't have much money for R and D. If operating expenditure accounts for seventy-four percent, thank you. No other questions? No, thank you, Chairman.
Mister Michael Look. Thank you, Chairman. My questions are mainly in relation to part five. First of all, on five point seven, declaration in relation to recruitment, Audit Commission examined twenty recruitment cases. So how did you select these twenty recruitment cases? Did you select them randomly? Professor Lam.
Usually, we randomly chose, chosen these recruitment cases unless it was expressly expressed that there were problems. For ten recruitment cases, that is fifty percent members of this election panel declared that they had personal or working relationships with the candidates. But the members concerned had remained on this election panel. There was no documentary evidence showing that the selection panel's decision on whether the members concerned should remain in the panel or withdraw from the panel. Can you draw reference from other R and D centers? Are there similar guidelines on members shouldn't remain on a panel? Are there similar guidelines on whether the members should remain on the panel or withdraw from the panel?
Professor Lam. Thank you, Chairman. Normally, if they don't even meet once in a decade, then there is no problem. But for those unfamiliar terms, of course, this shouldn't be allowed. The chairperson of this election panel has the power to make a decision. Our main point is that it is not settled clearly in the guidelines. Mister Michael Look, there should be guidelines in the manual. Well, among these twenty recruitment cases, ten of the recruitment cases, that is fifty percent, said that the members of this election panel had personal or working relationships with the candidates. In other words, among these ten cases, are there family members or are they classmates? Or were they classmates? Well, we may ask NAMI to see if they have information to provide. Mister Andy Feng. For existing staff members, former NAMI colleagues or former internship of NAMI. Former summer interns. The chairperson of the panel is, is a staff member of NAMI. For business development manager, uh, once worked with the candidate. For senior engineers, they were, I mean, they used to be staff members of NAMI, and they came back for the recruitment exercise. Some candidates knew the selection panel members in seminars. Some engineers were summer interns or former colleagues and so on. Mister Michael Look. This can allay the concerns of the public. Mainly, they used to be colleagues or they used to be business partners and so on. I believe this can allay the concerns of the public. Otherwise, people may say that personal connections are more important than one's qualifications. Next, I'd like to ask about five point one two. Monitor the overall distribution of staff performance grades. For many years, performance grade B, the distribution is not in line with the standard approved by the board. I want to ask the Audit Commission. Do you think this is, this is not ideal? Were the standards too lax? We believe this is not a normal situation. The same old problem. There are not guidelines. We are not banning this across the board, saying that this grade shouldn't be awarded. They could award A to all staff members, but the key is to have a guideline. NAMI should explain why all staff members should receive A, for example, in the performance appraisals. What about the general distribution? Probably the FSTB can answer this question in relation to performance appraisals in the government. I've joined the government for only two years. Our department is an independent department, and I cannot speak on behalf of all government departments. In the commercial sector, those being awarded A should be the minority. For some large organizations, they said that only five percent of the employees could receive A, the grade A. They assume that you are an average employee. And if you're better, they would adjust upwards. Otherwise, if all staff members receive grade A, then it's like no evaluation has been made. Mister Andy Feng. All staff members have a performance appraisal. Problem-solving skills, professional capacity, personal skills like integrity, reliability, and so on. All these criteria have a grade. All staff members are measured against these criteria by their immediate supervisors. And we have a guideline. If the actual distribution deviates from the distribution approved by the Board of Directors, then we will discuss with the board. The point is that we have an independent forum to assess the capability, attitude, and relationships with clients for each staff member. Mister Michael Look. The key is whether the standard is an absolute one or a relative one. If it is a relative one, then you should stick to the distribution approved by the Board of Directors. If all staff members have outstanding performance, then you can award grade A to all staff members. There is either no guideline by the Board of Directors on the overall distribution, or you should stick to the overall distribution approved by the board. There is room for improvement. Do these grades affect the award of bonuses or adjustments of salaries? Mister Andy Feng. Yes, definitely. We made reference to these performance appraisals to consider salary adjustments. Mister Michael Look. In the last meeting, I asked whether the former CEO received twenty percent received a full bonus. Professor Chang.
First of all, on performance, when it comes to the CEO's performance review, we use a holistic approach. In part five, you there's an assessment panel chaired by comprising INT representative and chairperson on the subcommittees, including management capability, professional know-how, connection, personal connection, personal network, and so on. They report the assessment to the Board of Directors and recommend the pay increment. Then finally, it is the board that makes the final decision. The Commissioner for ITC, the Commissioner for ITC will make, will approve the recommendation. In you, we also set out that for the recent five years, the annual salary adjustment is twenty-five percent of the basic salary.
Miss Look, I don't think my question's been answered. He asked about the twenty percent bonus. That is, if the former CEO received a full twenty percent bonus each year. So is it the case that in some years he got the full amount, in other years, he only got part of that? Well, that's the last sentence. We've always gone by the mechanism approved by the Board of Directors. In, in the past five years, the adjustment was twenty-five percent in recent years. Is twenty-five percent the cap? Yes. So that means, put simply, in the past, in those five years, the CEO was paid a full twenty-five percent bonus. Well, then I think it's for the public to assess. If the CEO did a great job, oh, oh, the, the, um, and um, now, under the leadership of CEO, there's probably room for improvement. And then, under the existing mechanism, the CEO was paid a full twenty-five percent bonus in five years. That means his performance was definitely an A. So should you not review the bonus system? Or is it the case that the twenty-five percent bonus is actually default? So you, unless the CEO performs really poorly. So I think NAMI really must review this. Because the last time I said, um, of course, the person who becomes a CEO may not work just for money, but definitely is an incentive, is a driving force. If the CEO performs only on average or there are even problems, and then the CEO is still paid twenty-five percent of the bonus, well, I'm sure the public will have certain views on that. Now, can I ask the audit if they have any suggestions on dealing with the matter? Director of Audit? Thank you, Mister Chairman, and thank you, Mister Look.
I'd like to clarify a point in response to Mister Look's comments or observations. Now, the Audit Commission wouldn't just look at an organization or fund because we find any problem with individuals or whatever. Uh, it's not as Mister Look said that we found a problem with the CEO, that's why we, um, 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 did an audit on NAMI. No, that's not the case. I've kept explaining to the public and the media that we'd follow certain criteria in choosing the targets of our audit study examination. Uh, in most cases, we don't find any problems, but still we will take turns to examine uh, different organizations. Now, because each year we publish sixteen reports, so that means uh, each bureau probably will have one or two reports in a year. So we take turns to go through the bureau to, so we can't say that it's because there's a problem with the bureau or whatever. Now, with this particular chapter, even if the CEO performed brilliantly, or even NAMI uh, were ranked number one in the world, as I explained, there are certain ways where they could work faster, better, and, and on, with less cost. And then, of course, in the process of audit examination, we found problems with certain individuals, like in this case. For example, just now, members found that there's a certain staff member who may incur expenditure for personal reasons during business travels. Now, I want to, we wanted to point that out because, as public officers, we, the money we spend is taxpayers' money, so we have to be careful with every cent we send. Now, um, um, President Xi also, uh, Jinping also said that as public officers, we must first make, have stringent requirements on ourselves before we can ask others to be disciplined. Now, for example, in the case, even if NAMI performed brilliantly, but if for certain reasons, there were, uh, uh, there was a problem with certain individual, then that spoiled the whole NAMI. Or his reputation at least. So that's why NAMI should review his system. Maybe it's not in the guidelines, but I think the reference, staff members should set a guideline for himself, and then there has to be rules, there have to be rules to follow. Now, the pay and performance bonus of CEO, or they're linked to the officer's performance, and in the case of the former CEO, the contract expired already. So we couldn't make recommendation on the particular case, but uh, you know, for all organizations that we audit or we don't audit, we want them to do a proper job to make sure that they are here to serve the public and they don't use public resources for their own benefits. Thank you, Director, for the reminder. But I think the crux of matter is still to do with the performance grading of a particularly staff member. Now, for the general staff members, it's not easy for them to be uh, rated as such that they could, they warrant the payment of the full bonus. But then the former CEO was given the full bonus over the years, each year. Now, I'm not targeting the, uh, current Now, I'm not targeting the current CEO, Mr. Andy Feng. I hope you'll be able to get the full bonus, because that will mean you performing brilliantly. But I think we need to set more aggressive targets, performance targets, because we need to assure the public that the bonus, that the CEO deserves the bonus. And then, we don't want the public to think that it doesn't matter how the CEO performs, he'll always get the full bonus. Now, in the report, we see there's rather some room for improvement on many different aspects. Of course, we've already paid a bonus, we couldn't recover it. I'm not saying we should recover it. The PSC considers the matter looking forward, so we hope that in future, when it comes to the performance of the CEO linked to the pay, there would be more specific criteria. Anything from the administration? On NAMI? Well, if I may mention this. INT is an important driver for us, for our economic development. We need to make sure we hire able persons to lead important INT developments, so we need to cherish these talents. Now, how do we make them join the government or public organizations? Now, Sun reward, of course, will be appealing, and it's not just Hong Kong competing for talents, other places also trying to compete for talents. So I think for both the government and the private organizations, they will find ways to try to attract or retain talents. Next, Ms. Kam and Ken?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, the point you make is something I'd like to mention to you, and it's related to my questions. Four point one nine. It says there has to be a healthy turnover of board members, that's the audit's recommendation. And then, four point three four. Response from NAMI and ITC. It points out that the board members don't fall under the scope of advisory... The board doesn't fall under the scope of advisory members, so the six-year rule doesn't apply. And then, well, you have already picked persons who have the relevant expertise and experience in relevant technology fields. So maybe there are indeed difficulties in replacing current board members frequently. So I'd like to ask the Director of Audit, what is the consideration for making this recommendation? As for the six-year rule, I think the Bureau needs to review the various R and D centers to see whether you need to follow this six-year rule. Personally, I don't think you need to, because you have to consider your own mission. And so, in your arrangement, you do allow board members to stay on. So you don't need to follow the guidelines on servant organizations and require members to be replaced every six years. And then, it says that there are twenty-three official members. Three of them have served more than six years. They've served between eight and fourteen years. So for the three board members who have served for more than six years, they are very much conversant with INT development, the roadmap of INT development. And then, they, that, it's not... They couldn't identify others that are suitable. And so, I NAMI reported reason to ITC, and ITC accepted that, the arrangement. So my, well, I would like the Bureau to respond to this arrangement. And then, Mr. Emin Wong said we have to have regard to the circumstances in adjusting our policies. Now, here we're talking about CEO or senior management staff. Maybe the standards are not the same. Of course, then probably is a need for more stringent standards. And then, for general staff members, you don't allow them to take personal leave, and you want them to come fly back and go again on holiday. Well, I don't think no one wants to stay in NAMI. So you have to consider the staff members concerned. Is it right to impose certain restrictions on board members, for instance? Is it practical to impose a six-year rule? So I wonder if the Commissioner will consider. Which Commissioner? The Director of Audit, really, the questions for the Director of Audit. Director of Audit? Well, thank you, Chairman, thank you, Ms. Khan, for the question. You're right, Ms. Khan. The guidelines are there. Guidelines, you know, are rigid, but then, you know, people have flexibility. So that's why we have addressed your concern. In four point three two, we said as far as practical, they should ensure healthy turnover. That's how we put it.
Now, I can appreciate that. I have my own experience, because I was a member on a particular advisory company for more than six years, and I asked the administration why they kept me. And they said, because you have more experience, please stay on for another two years. So I served for eight years. That's my own case. Now, in this case, I do appreciate the challenges faced by Professor Sun and the Commissioner of INT. But then, there's need for turnover eventually. If we find that a member stays on a board for ten, twenty, thirty years, what, when that person leaves, what will happen? So these are the issues we want to bring up for consideration by the Commissioner of INT. Well, sometimes, good advice is not pleasing to the ear, but that's always been the role of the Audit Commission. Professor Sun, if I could give an overall response?
I agree with Ms. Kam and Ken and the Director of Audit. Now, we have a strict six-year rule in the government. That is, members should not serve on the same committee for more than six years. This is necessary, so we will keep having new blood and new ideas in various advisory committees. And I hope NAMI will follow this mechanism as far as possible. So thank you for the views and recommendations. Ms. Kam and Ken?
If I may clarify what I mean. I say we have to consider whether the guidelines apply in this case, because that guidelines apply to advisory bodies under the government. Now, ITC has actually given response. The ITC believes that guidelines shouldn't apply because the center is set up as a limited guarantee, a committee by guarantee. Even if in future, it's going to match with ASRI. So first of all, we need to decide what standards to follow. And then, we will see whether the guidelines apply or not, and that's important. If the guidelines don't apply, now, the, it said just now, we should follow the governance of NAMI. And as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, not anyone could work in the INT field. So that's why there are three types of director. Type A is from UST, and there are other, and there are sixteen board members, fourteen must come from the industry or professional sectors, such as accountants, lawyers, and so on, this to help to ensure good governance of NAMI. And then, the ITC is responsible governing, monitoring the entire NAMI. And then, so the Articles of Association, well, that imposes heavy responsibilities on the Board of Director, monitoring the sustainability of operations, approve all operation reports, audit reports, and also make sure that the funds received are spent in accordance with the approved annual plan. So the Board of Directors, in particular Chair of the Board, have honorance duties. So I don't think we need to rigidly follow the six-year rule. And as the Commissioner pointed out, maybe it's a good practice, but whether we should apply or not, well, perhaps Deputy Chairman, when you sum up or you could mention this point, because we need to write, give our own recommendations in our report. My personal view is that we do not need to rigidly follow the six-year rule that applies to ASPs. Ms. Ivan Lee, anything else from you? No, nothing. Okay, Ms. Kam and Ken, they've heard you.
Part five. Now, staff turnover. Twenty-two point five percent, five point two-nine, pair five point two-nine, twenty-eight percent. Now, that's mention of a research talent hub. There are certain conditions, and there are also certain restrictions. So I hope the Secretary will look at that research talent hub. There is restriction on tenure. It shouldn't be more than thirty-six months. That means the, that means, I'm talking about the important talents under the scheme. So if there are talents coming to Hong Kong under the research hub talent, would it affect our operations? So do we need to review this restriction? Because now we want to proactively develop the INT sector. Ms. Ivan Lee? Thank you. Sorry, perhaps I didn't, I wasn't listening to Ms. Kam and Ken's question. Let me try to explain the design of the research talent hub. Now, if public organizations or organizations involved in R and T, please speak into the microphone. When they start a project, the funding is based on the period of the project. At most, it's three years. But if it's a six-months project, then the ITC will only give funding for six months. So why do we mention four? We struck a balance there. So we see how we could help the R and D project or the R and D center. At the same time, we don't want to impose an excessive burden on public funds because the expenses involved for each researcher are substantial. So that's the criteria we go by. So maybe that's why, when an R and D project is completed, then the talents recruited under the research talent hub may either have to leave, or they may apply for another post in the R and D center in a different capacity. Because the project's finished, so that means the funding for the project is also finished.
All right, if you refer to two point three three, the Audit Commission said the staff members engaged under research talent hub has decreased from thirty-one in twenty-twenty to twenty-one to twenty-two to, in twenty-twenty-three to twenty-four. You are short researchers engaged under the research talent hub? Or are you short on staff in general? Professor Ching?
Thank you, Ms. Khan, for your questions. In R and D, the division of work is very fine. Everyone has a different focus of study in their M field or doctoral degrees. We are now talking about researchers engaged under research talent hub or contract staff. We would have reference to their expertise. For example, for the plastic bottle project that I mentioned, we wouldn't have the same talents for that project and for the battery project. We do monitor closely the staff wastage. As for how many talents we need for each project, there is supply and demand. Those under research talent hub are more junior. They have just got their PhD. For those who are more experienced, they wouldn't be engaged under research talent hub. All I'm saying is, talents are very important to us. We must try our best to recruit and retain talents, not just for NAMI, but also for the development of Hong Kong. Ms. Kam and Khan? To put it simply, in five point nine, we have an average staff turnover rate of twenty-two point eight percent. It does not directly relate to the fact that there are restrictions under research talent hub, right? Professor Ching? There is no apparent relationship because for each project, we need different talents. Understood. Ms. Yu, you have something to add? Please turn on Ms. Yu's microphone. I want to add that there is no relationship at all between the two. Most of our employees, when we recruit them, we have reference to their background and their salary expectations. And then, we would engage them through the research talent hub. After the research talent hub project has ended, we would see if we can hire them for existing projects if they have the right expertise. Now, I want to ask about five point one seven, the Chief Technology Officer or Chief Science Officer. In January twenty-twenty-two, the Board of Directors approved the reorganization of the senior management of NAMI. We now have four new key posts, Chief Commercial Officer, Chief Operating Officer, Chief Technology Officer. And in the organization chart, it does not show that there is a Chief Science Officer. It is due to the fact that, according to the audit's findings, the Chief Science Officer post has not been filled. When will the post be filled? Mr. Andy Feng?
Indeed, Chief Science Officer, the post was created after the reorganization in January twenty-twenty-two. We wanted to adopt a forward-looking approach, and we would want to have the Chief Science Officer to try to plan ahead. The Chief Technology Officer would be overseeing projects. And we have found that for the three officers we have already, we could handle the relevant workload. We actually discussed at a recent meeting that there is probably no need for having to hire the Chief Science Officer post. And with our merger with ASRI in future, perhaps we will have another restructuring. That's why we have not filled that post. Thank you.
Deputy Chairman? I understand that members have asked a number of questions on the relevant parts, but we still have time, so let me follow up on certain issues. The Director of Audit said they selected NAMI for audit, not because they didn't do too well. Let me refer to a table, table fifteen. Actually, let me also refer to table twenty-seven. It seems that NAMI, out of the five R and D centers, performed the worst. Is my observation correct, Director of Audit? Director of Audit? Thank you, Chair. Mr. Look's question was whether the CEO didn't perform too well that we selected NAMI for audit. And my response was, we did not target an organization because an individual did not do too well. As for the tables that the member referred to, the information in there is correct. Now, I want to ask, why did the Director of Audit select NAMI for audit then? Professor Nelson Lam? We actually mentioned this at the last meeting. We did note, first of all, in the legal paper... We did note, first of all, in the legal paper. There were some. Numbers on the operating expenditure, there were some discrepancies, we did our own calculations after that. And as I said earlier, we would regularly review. Different organizations and. Bureaus and departments' performance, there are five R and D centers. Under the I T I B, and NAMI is actually receiving the most funding out of. The five centers, which is why we are looking. We selected NAMI for audit, there is probably no need for you to conduct further assessments, because. S three is to merge with NAMI. But of course, when we selected one of the R and D centers for audit, we hope that the other R and D. Centers would refer to the experience, we are to invest much in I N T in future. I think with this snapshot here, we really need to. Make sure governance is done well with I N D, I N T. Research centers, I will not draw on the issues any further, because members have asked many questions. On the issues. Well, a member said, we shouldn't pay full bonus whenever. Whatever the performance the C E O is, but let me say this, I think Mister Andy Feng's. It answers really were quite solid and practical. So I hope you do get the full bonus, they have given. Quite full answers, I would like to thank everyone who have provided answers to our questions, thank you, any other members who have any questions? If not, let me say something here. For part four. We talked about how staff members. Whether they can stay behind after business travels, the Audit Commission said. For government department civil servants, they would have to come back. To Hong Kong before taking another personal trip, I have a colleague who lives in Shenzhen. So I asked them to handle some work for me in. Shenzhen, because they were going to be there in the weekend, but they said they couldn't do that, they had to come back to Hong Kong before they. Go back to Shenzhen to handle what I want them to do. I thought it was quite. Unnecessary, because it would just be a waste of time and resources. If the staff member. Made arrangements for the reason of the fact that it would be convenient for them to get home. I think it wouldn't be reasonable, but then if it just so happened, and that would save time and resources for both of us. Why must we adopt the approach of the government? Professor Sun did mention, we have to give off the right impression to the public. But I think it's not just a problem of impression, I think citizens need to understand that there. May be an actual need for such, if we're always worrying about perception. Instead of value for money. It may seem to be the case that. We are not respecting our colleagues. And that may deter people from. Joining the relevant industries or companies or organizations. So let me say this. In future, if there is delay with a staff member's travel, if one. Or if one has to stay behind, if there is a difference with the plane fare, of course, the staff member would have to settle that. And if one had to stay behind for their personal trip, they would of course have to declare that. And you would have to combine the two applications when considering the relevant applications. But it just seems to be the case that they could deal with certain things. With the business travel, I do not see any reason why that shouldn't be allowed, I don't think it only applies to the relevant. Organization, I think it should be the case in the government as well, perhaps. The professor can convey the message to the Chief Executive, yes Deputy Chairman, something to add? Well, I think you're, we're nearing the conclusion here, we have talked about nearing the conclusion so much these days. But let me say this, having heard what the chairman say, I need to say something, I do not agree with what he said, for example, paragraph four point four. They have used two point four million dollars for business travels of staff members. For plane fare alone, that had cost two million dollars. For twenty business travels, nine of them had modifications of travel arrangements. And the applications. For leave and the business travels were not considered jointly. I agree to a certain extent of what the chairman said about. Recruiting I N T's talents, but the brand of Hong Kong has always been about integrity for civil servants or. Other management personnel of public organizations. There has been an uproar, because. There seemed to be a problem with officers approving their. Own out of budget expenses, and that seemed to be corrupt, and I thank the Director of Audit for raising the relevant issues. I think we need to maintain integrity in the government and public organizations. Thank you, I do understand some recommendations and numbers are provided by the government, and I think we can all reach our conclusion here. I myself have always made a personal trip after my travel on every occasion, because it was. Convenient for me to do certain things, but let me also say this, for some cases, it is almost necessary to. It is burdensome for them to not to go a different route. Anyway, I'm not sure if NAMI wants to offer an explanation for the. Nine business travels that had modifications of travel arrangements. Or was there a justifiable reason, a work related reason, anything to add from NAMI? Mister Andy Feng, C E O. Chair, Deputy Chairman. There were nine business travels that had modifications of travel arrangements. The staff member went to promote products to our collaborating partners that included destinations such as Geneva, Boston, et cetera. That involve exhibitions. And conferences to promote NAMI, so every business travel was work related. And we also had a convention that had two hundred to three hundred people attend in Las Vegas, that the staff member attended. We understand the Audit Commission's recommendations, and we have reviewed and updated our guidelines in November. To make sure there is transparency in applications for business travels and personal leave, so that. These can be considered together when approving the relevant applications, anything to add? None, all right, let me say this here. For the six year rule. I have served on the Housing Authority for eight years, so I have served there for more than six years as well. I'm also in detention essentially, I do understand the need to have new blood. If we can have more people serve on the board or committee. It will definitely be beneficial to the development of the relevant bodies. But the problem is, in certain fields, we may not be able to engage the right talent. And in I N T, we really need talent, we need to retain talent in the field. If we have to find someone. Simply because of the six year rule, while they may not be as qualified, it is probably not ideal, as Professor Ching said. She has been working there as a volunteer as well, I need to thank you. And you have expressed. Things very clearly, you are quite familiar with the operations, I almost thought you were a staff member of NAMI. I think your selfless contributions to the I N T development in Hong Kong. All right, any other members or directors who would like to say something, none, none? All right, that's it for the hearing, I thank everyone for attending today's hearing, thank you, thank you.